We are live.
Thank you. Welcome to tonight's city council study session. We have one item on the agenda, and that is the discussion regarding a proposed conversion therapy ordinance from the Human Rights Commission. I will turn it over to our chief, thank you, Diversity and Equity Officer Cynthia Allen, to give us any other necessary introduction.
Thank you so much, Mayor Clark. Well, thank you all for being here this evening and for anyone who's tuning in. The Human Rights Commission has requested that we look into the options for enhancing our ordinances around conversion therapy. And so we have Chair Sage Malden who will introduce our speakers that will help to give us more background and perspective on why this is necessary in order to move forward. Thank you so much. Sage, Chair Malden.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good evening, Mayor Clark and city council members. My name is Sage Malden. I am the Chair of the City Norman's Human Rights Commission. This evening you will hear from several individuals. You will hear from Michael Robertson, who is a president of Norman P. Flag, Nathaniel Smith, who is a president of Norman Pride, Pixie Quigley, who is the Vice President of Norman Pride, and Anthony Perrington, who is one of our Assistant City Attorneys. So yeah, this evening's discussion will center on the recommended conversion therapy amendments to the read the joint letter authored by Norman P. Flag's and Norman Pride's Board of Directors. Then Nathaniel and Pixie will give a presentation on so-called conversion therapy, what it is and why the city Norman should take action to protect our LGBTQ youth from it. And then afterwards, Anthony will discuss the recommended conversion therapy amendments in depth. So of course, on behalf of the City Norman's Human Rights Commission and Norman's LGBTQ youth, I thank you for taking this matter seriously. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Okay, Michael, the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you, Sage, and thank you all for having me. Dear Mayor Clark, members of the Norman City Council and Human Rights Commissioners, respect for human decency and development of scientific-based policy should be cornerstones of democracy. Government has an obligation to provide protections for citizens and is particularly accountable for vulnerable populations. Norman has stood as a beacon of hope for the LGBTQ plus individuals. It is a place that welcomes and celebrates diversity, but it must take a firm stand for the rights of LGBTQ plus youth by banning sexual orientation change efforts and so-called conversion therapy. Since 1998, the American Psychiatric Association has opposed the use of conversion therapy. The APA bases their opposition on the longstanding knowledge that identifying as LGBTQ plus is not a mental disorder. Attempts to change an individual's sexuality or gender identity are not only futile and ineffective, they're also extremely, extremely dangerous. As of the writing of this letter, all major counseling associations, including the American Counseling Association, National Association of Social Workers, and the American Association for Marriage and Family Therapists have renounced this harmful practice. Many professionals in the community strongly oppose the term "conversion therapy", instead preferring the term "sexual orientation change efforts." Those who provide therapeutic mental health services feel that the word "therapy" should be reserved for services that heal. Sexual orientation change efforts often lead to increased self-esteem issues, self-harm, and even more severe consequences, including increased substance abuse, suicidal ideation, and risky behaviors. Not only is there no credible evidence that conversion therapy methods of any kind actually work, there is a large amount of data that proves its ineffectiveness. Therefore, it comes into question why there are calls for supporting and validating such harmful practices, especially considering that all major counseling and psycholog- psychology, excuse me. I'll back up. Therefore, it comes into question why there are calls for supporting and validating such harmful practices, especially considering that all major counseling and psychologically organizations and most professionals in the field speak so strongly against it. Sexual orientation change efforts continue to exist due to an ill-informed public with biases and fears filling their hearts and minds. Any professionals who practice these efforts and those who support them in their use are continuing to stigmatize and attempting to erase LGBTQ plus individuals. We cannot stand by while state lawmakers attempt to lay claim to the lives of children on the grounds of parental and religious rights. History has its eyes on us. Norman again has the opportunity to be on the right side of history, to be a safe haven of hope and love. But this is not just about optics and symbolism. It is about protecting children from reckless and harmful practices. Therefore, we ask that an ordinance be passed to prohibit the licensed professionals from practicing conversion therapy on our LGBTQ plus youth in the city of Norman. Sincerely, Norman Pride Board and Norman P. Flag Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next up is Nathaniel and Pixie.
Good evening. So let me get this pulled up real quick. And we will get started. Alrighty, so I'm going to go a little bit more in depth into exactly what conversion therapy is. So as defined by the Trevor Project, conversion therapy is the pseudoscientific practice of trying to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity. There is no reliable evidence that sexual orientation can be changed, and medical institutions warn that conversion therapy practices are ineffective and potentially harmful. According to a 2009 report of the American Psychological Association, the techniques that therapists have used to try to change sexual orientation and gender identity include inducing nausea, vomiting, paralysis, all while showing patients homoerotic images. Other tactics include providing electrical shocks, having individuals snap an elastic band around the wrist when aroused by same-sex erotic images or thoughts. Techniques also can include trying to make patients' behavior more stereotypically feminine or masculine, teaching heterosexual dating skills, using hypnosis to try to redirect desires. And all of these are based on the scientifically discredited premise that being LGBTQ is a defect. Some may ask, does it work? And simply put, it is not. It is based on an outdated and false notion that being LGBTQ is a mental illness that needs to be cured. Despite all major medical associations' agreement that having an LGBTQ identity is a normal variant of human nature. The American Psychiatric Association has not treated homosexuality as a mental illness since 1973. And a 2009 report by the American Psychological Association Task Force found scientifically valid research indicates that it is unlikely that individuals or that individuals will be able to reduce same-sex attractions or increase other sex sexual attractions through sexual orientation change efforts. And this is just a very small list of some of the organizations that have denounced the practice of conversion therapy. There are many more, but the slide just is not big enough for that. And some of the harms of conversion therapy, it can be extremely dangerous. And in 2009, the APA issued a report concluding that the reported risk of the practices can include depression, guilt, helplessness, shame, social withdrawal, substance abuse, overall stress, disappointment, self-blame, decreased self-esteem, increased self-hatred, blame towards the parents, feeling of anger and betrayal, problems in sexual and emotional intimacy, high-risk sexual behaviors, and the feeling of being dehumanized and untrue to oneself. And some of the reasons why we need to protect our LGBTQ youth, as you can see from some of the statistics on the screen, it's just a staggering number of LGBTQ youth that is being subjected to this conversion therapy. And as of right now, 0% of our LGBTQ youth in Oklahoma is being protected from conversion therapy. Currently, in the US, there are 20 states that have laws that ban conversion therapy, and passing this ordinance would make Norman the first city and the only city in Oklahoma to be protecting their LGBTQ youth. So we conducted some research of local mental health providers in Norman, and six out of the 10 practice or condone the use of conversion therapy. Your decision on this gives Norman the opportunity to be the first and only city in Oklahoma to start protecting its LGBTQ youth. And passing this ordinance would put Norman one step further into building an inclusive community. And now I'm going to pass on to Pixie, and she's going to go a little bit deeper into the research.
So I want to begin by saying that the National Center for Lesbian Rights has advised us not to disclose the names of specific locations or providers and to just focus on the task at hand. We contacted 13 licensed mental health providers in Norman, and of the 10 who responded, two offered to put us on their waitlist, two recommended other providers or organizations that support or may provide those services, including focus on the family. One did not accept adolescent patients but wished us well on our search. One labeled our request as "conversion therapy" and said they don't practice it, but then went on to explain that homosexuality can often be attributed to factors like sexual assault or abuse, and described it as a confusion. One stated that they are unfortunately unable to provide that type of service. Three recommended LGBTQ plus affirming services organizations, which was great, but only one of those three explicitly stated that they do not consider LGBTQ to be a mental illness. This is just a small sample of health professionals in Norman. So it's clear that conversion therapy is an issue and our city and a real threat to our youth. So it's critical that we take action now to protect our kids.
Thank you, Nathaniel and Pixie, not only for that presentation but for the rigorous research you did to support it. Last up is Anthony.
All right, so I'm just kind of going to run down through the memo and the ordinance changes and effect. And I'm going to mention ahead of time, I guess when I sent the materials out for the council conference, I included a previous draft. I'm going to share my screen. It's the actual, there was a small change that didn't get included that might have a big impact on my answers to questions. So I'll share that once I get to that point. But before I like talk specifically about the ordinance, I kind of wanted to talk more generally about why we went with the approach that we did. And so, and the, you know, and there are two general approaches that states have adopted, and I think about 21 states have currently adopted bans on conversion therapy, the majority of which have already established licensing schemes in which they license mental health professionals. And most of them have gone with, I guess you would call it a ban that incorporates it into their state's licensing scheme. So for example, and the one that was, you know, introduced in Oklahoma, that legislation would have made it unprofessional conduct to engage in any such practice. And so a lot of the times you see they adopt, I guess what you could call the California approach because they're the ones who first did it. And so it's through the licensing scheme of mental health providers. The minority approach, only two states have done it this way. They have done a use-of-funds approach. And so they specifically have, you know, adopted legislation that restricts state funds for youth and any, I guess to anyone who's providing these services or, you know, putting state funds towards those purposes in and of itself. So that's the minority approach at the state level. And states where they have enacted these bans and states where they haven't enacted these bans, municipalities have also taken it upon themselves to enact local legislation. A lot of these make it a civil fine to engage in these practices. Or they, and this is probably more relevant in states that have a statewide ban as well as, but on the local level in those states, a lot of municipalities have made it, you know, have banned it, but they have their remedy when they, you know, actually find, you know, a violation of that city ordinance is to refer it to the state agency that licenses those mental health professionals. So it's different from the state statute, but it kind of just, you know, sends them back to the state level. So it's not really a local enforcement so much as just local referral to state services. So with all that being said, in order to, you know, in, you know, determining which one to approach on the city level, we went with the use-of-funds approach. That is the minority approach, but I thought that it was the better approach based on the fact that as a municipality, we do not have a mental health licensing scheme. And we probably would be easily preempted had we adopted one. And then also, and we could have technically done what other cities have done, which is just outlawed it, I guess. And then, but the difference is, we don't, in Oklahoma, we don't really have as a municipality the alternative to do a civil fine rather than a criminal fine. So technically, a violation of that statute would have been a criminal misdemeanor, which carries higher constitutional protections and wouldn't be as easily enforceable as, you know, like a civil fine that other states and other cities have access to and have the procedures to do that. And so our state law just isn't set up for, you know, those civil fines at the local level. So based on that, we went with the use-of-funds approach. And I think that, you know, considering Oklahoma law and considering the, you know, powers that municipalities have, I mean, the constraints that, you know, municipalities have in Oklahoma as compared to other states, this is the best approach considering all those factors. And then we incorporated this change into Chapter 7, which is the Human Rights Code of the City of Norman. And really, the only changes we've made to Chapter 7 was, one, we included a definition of conversion therapy. And then finally, which I'm going to share my screen on this. And so on this one, let me kind of, this is the actual language that we would use that restricts the use of city funds. And so, and this is the part that didn't necessarily get included in the previous draft that was mistakenly sent. And that's included in your materials, but this is actually the language that we're recommending be adopted. So this mirrors a lot of the same approach, just in a kind of a different format that states have done. So again, we're limiting, limiting, limiting it only to mental health providers, have all states have done. And we're doing that so any, you know, the city would not, you know, apply, donate, or use funds to any mental health provider who's licensed by the state if they engage in conversion therapy for anyone under the age of 18 or anyone who's under a conservatorship, which is just like a, you know, the, like a guardianship kind of situation. So that's, like, trying to stop sharing my screen. There it is. Okay. And that's kind of the approach, and that's kind of the reason why we went with that approach. It's not necessarily the type of conversion therapy ban that most people probably just, you know, immediately, you know, think of. It's not necessarily the most intuitive approach, but I think it's, might be the smartest approach considering the constraints that we're operating under. So. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this wonderful presentation from city staff, the Human Rights Commission, P. Flag, and Norman Pride? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, the raise hand button is different. I don't know. Sorry. I think I understand this pretty clearly. I don't have any questions right at this moment. I just, I do really appreciate you bringing this forward. I know we've talked about this before, and I'm glad to see it making its way to here. And I'm pretty taken aback a bit by those statistics about the local providers. That's really shocking to me. And so I'm thankful for the information and looking forward to continuing this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall? Nope, you're not unmuted.
Okay, let's try that again. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came forward tonight and the work of the Human Rights Commission and those that are representing the Human Rights Commission in, you know, bringing this forward for our consideration. I wanted to ask Mr. Perrington, I'm glad to see the update because I was a little confused with the language in the draft that was included in the agenda. And I would like you to send out the updated language if you don't mind. So appreciate that clarification. And those are, that's all the questions that I have at this time.
Okay. Any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Patron?
Thank you. The updates that we made to the Human Rights Ordinance a year or so ago had an oversight mechanism where if people were victim of racism and employment or housing or what have you, they could file a complaint with the city and an investigation would be started. Is there, does that apply to this as well?
So I haven't really thought of that before. That's an interesting question. Technically, under, you know, the, I think the authority that was given to the Human Rights Commission was specifically in the form of discrimination. And so I'm not, and now that I think about it, I'm not really sure if it would apply. It wouldn't apply, I don't think, under this particular, you know, 7-111 limitation on city funds. Because in, in order for this, in order for, I guess, that specific provision to be violated, the city funds would have to be appropriated to someone who is engaging in those practices and is, and is who is a mental health provider. So these changes don't incorporate any mechanism for the Human Rights Commission to hear a complaint on a mental health provider who is, you know, engaging in these practices. I think it would be a more internal approach in determining whether or not to distribute those funds or, you know, any mechanism that we can use. I guess approach how, or, you know, preventing that from happening in the first place. So it doesn't necessarily go under that process now.
Okay, so what if they were receiving city funds in some way, or they work for an organization that is receiving those funds? And they wanted to file a complaint saying, you know, I didn't anticipate that this would be part of my counseling session? Would that then kick into play where they could have some redress through the city, that they could file a complaint?
So are you asking, I think, let me rephrase just to make sure that I'm on the same page. So if someone who is under the age of 18 was receiving these services and, you know, and that person had, or that provider had been receiving city funds, could that minor use that process at the HRC to issue a complaint against that provider?
They were just getting, you know, regular therapy. They went to a counselor to talk about their parents' divorce or something, and all of a sudden, and that this particular agency was receiving nonprofit dollar, you know, nonprofit that was receiving dollars from the city of Norman. And then during the course of their therapy, this is completely hypothetical, they say, well, maybe it's not the divorce that's upsetting you. Maybe it's the fact you're gay. We should talk about how we can fix that while you're sitting here. And that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, would they have redress at that point for violating the ordinance?
I don't think it would be through that same process that is like the discrimination complaint. I think that's really triggered by different parts of the Human Rights Ordinance. I would have to look more specifically at the triggering language and the ordinance, but I also think that there are some procedural problems with a minor issuing a complaint on their own behalf, just because I know that it's more of a complicated, complicated set of procedural issues. Whenever, you know, like a minor is, you know, initiating a complaint or something, it's usually filed on their behalf by a parent. And in this situation, it might not necessarily be that situation where they're able to do that. But I don't think that the language is distinct enough for them to operate under that particular portion of the ordinance, the complaint process.
If I may interject here, I do think that that could be cause for the city no longer funding that agency, of course. And so that's really the redress we get within this ordinance changes. If you provide that service, you don't get city funds anymore.
Okay, it would just make sense to me that there would be a way that we would learn that, and that would come from the client. So I don't know, maybe we can think our way through that before it goes to first reading, assuming that it does. Thank you. I really appreciate your work and look forward to protecting some kids.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions regarding this proposed ordinance change? Seeing none, I will also add that as we see our LGBTQ plus youth continue to come under attack in this state, I'm hopeful that we can do whatever we can to protect them here in Norman. And as you all know, we have worked very, very hard to live out our motto of building an inclusive community. And I can't think of a group of people that needs our protection more than our kids. So I appreciate your work on this, and I look forward to our next discussion on this topic. Thank you all for joining us tonight. And it is now 6:00 PM. Please turn off your cameras and turn mute your microphones, and I will see you at 6:30 for our regular council meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, it is 6:30. I think we do. All right, Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Okay, Row. Councilmember Petron. Councilmember.
Hold on one second. Good evening.
That's why I was waiting on you, sorry.
Your camera wasn't on. I was just making sure you were there, Ellen. I appreciate you so much. Okay, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Norman City Council, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Utilities Authority, and the Norman Increment Tax Finance Authority Council Meeting of May 11th. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Here.
Councilmember Petron.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Nash. He's absent. Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Here. And before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to share, if you'll indulge me, why Councilmember Nash is not here. Can everyone see it? Okay, well, welcome to one of Norman's newest residents. The mother and daughter are doing just fine, and I think we can all agree that Councilmember Nash gets a pass for tonight. Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now on to approval of the minutes. We're going to approve the, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? The motion on the floor is to approve the City Council Finance Committee minutes of March 18th, 2021, and City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of April 27th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The vote was unanimous.
Thank you. I'm going to jump around just a little bit, and I'm going to move to item six, Resolution 2021-100, expressing appreciation to Councilmember Kate Beerman for serving as Councilmember for Ward One. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Kate Beerman for serving as Ward One Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Council or Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Voting on your own resolution. Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash. No, Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Aye.
Mayor Clark.
Aye.
It is unanimous again.
Thank you. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Kate Beerman for serving as the Ward One Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of a democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of the government. And whereas the level of government, which is closest to the people, is that of city government. And whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community and bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job. And whereas those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities. And whereas these public officials assume a demanding task, it's like an understatement, a very demanding task, to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands. And whereas Kate Beerman served on the City Council representing Ward One from July 4th, 2017 until May 11th, 2021. And whereas during her tenure, she worked on equality for all, was a strong voice for the residents of Ward One, supported more affordable housing, and was an advocate for animals. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commend and extend appreciation to Kate Beerman for her service to this community as Councilmember for Ward One, and wish her well and the very best in her future endeavors. Congratulations, Kate. Would you like to say anything?
I said a lot last week, or the last meeting, so I'm going to keep it very short tonight. I'm looking forward to seeing this energetic council take on the significant tasks ahead, and I am very bittersweet about bringing this unique perspective back to the other side of the dais. It is going to be a challenge for me to no longer be sitting where you are, but I'm going to do what I can from my end to bring the cavalry for all of the things that you all are going to need public support for moving forward. So please keep me a part of the conversation, and I will talk to you all soon. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, you are resigned. And we're going to switch back to item four, which is the administering of the oath of office to Brandy Studley. As you may recall, she did win her election in February, and with Councilwoman Beerman moving out of her ward, she has decided to step aside to allow Ms. Studley to get sworn in early and take on the job. So I will turn it over to Judge Drew Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Studley, if you'll raise your right hand, I will administer the oath. If you'll repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brandy Studley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Councilmember to the best of my ability.
As Councilmember to the best of my abilities.
Very good. I declare you duly sworn and seated to the office of Councilmember for the City of Norman. Congratulations.
I second that. Congratulations, Councilmember. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to nomination of Lauren Schuler to fill the vacancy in Ward Two for the remainder of the term, followed by the oath of office. As you may recall, Councilwoman Matt McGary had to step down rather quickly into his term, and Councilmember Beerman and Councilmember Hall worked in oversight to develop a process that could streamline the appointment process generally, given this is what our fifth time in like a year to have to go through this. So Councilmember Hall, I look forward into the next oversight committee, of which you will now be chair, providing your results of how you think the process went, ways we can improve it, and submitting that recommendation to our Charter Review Commission. So I hereby formally nominate Lauren Schuler to fulfill the remainder of the term for Ward Two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Okay, I'm going to start out with Councilmember Studley.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
It's an unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Judge Nichols to administer the oath of office.
All right, thank you again. All right, Ms. Schuler, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Lauren Schuler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Councilmember to the best of my ability.
As Councilmember to the best of my ability.
I declare you duly sworn and seated to the office of Councilmember for the City of Norman. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you, Judge Nichols.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
All right, we will now move on to a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 16th through 22nd, excuse me, yeah, 16th through 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Norman. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley.
Aye.
Councilmember Schuler.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember. Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The proclamation is approved unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 16th through the 21st, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Norman. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service as members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services teams consist of emergency medical technicians, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators who engage in hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, the citizens of Norman benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals and value the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. And whereas, injury prevention and the appropriate use of the emergency medical services system will help reduce national healthcare costs. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, will hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 21st, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Norman. Is there anyone here to accept the proclamation?
Mayor Eddie Sims is here.
Thank you. Eddie, I'll turn it over to you. But before I do, Eddie has been a rock star in, how many emergency management meetings have we had now?
I lost count.
As have I. I just wanna tell you right now, I appreciate everything that you have done, and your insight has been invaluable in our management of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and Council for recognizing EMS Week. I think this has been a challenging year beyond anything we could have imagined a few months ago. And one thing is brought out is the teamwork. The teamwork both within public safety and all aspects of public safety, and also healthcare and ED, and the relationship between healthcare and public safety. Everybody that touches the patient from the time they call 911 or the dispatcher begins to see what's wrong, figure out who to send, and provide life-saving instructions to the firefighter and police officer, first responders, to the Mstat paramedics, and EMTs that respond to treat the patient and then deliver them to the ER with the nurses and physicians. Continue that care until the ultimate outcome, which is usually positive, and we're very fortunate to have such a high-performing health system as we do here in Norman. A lot of the problems that Oklahoma City had during the pandemic, we never had, and it's because of the dedication and the leadership of the folks at the hospital and healthcare system. You know, if you look at this year, COVID was something we couldn't have imagined, although I will say, 15 or 20 years ago, we did actually drill and have a plan for mass immunization back when smallpox was a concern. So that came in to be able to be put to good use. But then we had the ice storm, the snowstorm, the week of frigid weather, and then most recently, the hailstorm. And what that has shown is that all the abilities for the different departments to work together in a way that happens so rarely in this country, to put the patient or the victim or the issue in front and put their own egos aside, is something this town should be really, really proud of. And I'm very proud to be part of Public Safety and part of Emergency Medical Services Week, and would just like to say that every dollar that's invested in public safety in this town pays really good dividends. So please continue to support it as we move forward, whatever new challenges will come. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. I appreciate you so much. Now, on to item eight, a proclamation proclaiming the month of May 2021 as Bike Month, and Friday, May 21st, 2021, as Bike-to-Work Day in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to accept this proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Aye.
Councilmember Schuler?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
Thank you.
A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May 2021 as Bike Month, and Friday, May 21st, 2021, as Bike-to-Work Day in the City of Norman. Whereas, today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally-friendly form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, provides quality recreation, and helps relieve the fiscal strain of high gas prices. And whereas, the education of cyclists and motorists as of the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas, the City of Norman continues to update its bicycle plan and bicycle transportation network, including a newly-designed bicycle brochure and map, several planned bicycle facilities, such the inclusion of safe bike transportation accommodations on the road widening projects on 24th Avenue Southeast and 36th Avenue Northwest, and the continued design and construction of multimodal off-street bike packs along State Highway Nine, along Flood Avenue from Robinson Street to Tecumseh Road, along 24th Avenue Northwest between Robinson and Rock Creek Road, and along Constitution Street from Jenkins Avenue to Classen Boulevard. And whereas, the City of Norman has been designated by the League of American Cyclists as an official bicycle-friendly community. And whereas, the Norman Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Bicycle League of Norman, the Oklahoma Bicycle Society, and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Bike Month, and also proclaim Friday, May 21st, 2021, as Bike-to-Work Day in the City of Norman, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety, to be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways, and to invite all to ride their bicycles to Andrews Park that morning as they bike to work for an 8:30 a.m. rally as a show of support for bicycle use for all those reasons named here. And do we have someone here to accept the proclamation?
Hi, this is Jordan Evans with ACOG.
Thank you. Go, take it away, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, thank you. We are grateful to work with the City of Norman on all things bicycle-related. This month is a great chance to highlight the benefits of bicycling, not only for recreation, but for transportation and fitness, and all the things that you just said. So again, we're very grateful to work with Norman and look forward to improving bicycling in our region and the City of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. It's a pleasure to work with ACOG. You do so much to help us with these initiatives. I will also mention that if, for some reason, you are unable to attend Bike-to-Work Day on Friday, May 21st, at 8:30 a.m. from Andrews Park, on Saturday, May 22nd, is our next Move with the Mayor initiative, and we'll be cycling down Legacy Trail. So be sure to join us. The event will be on Facebook shortly, and I hope you will consider joining us. Okay, now on to item nine, proclamation proclaiming Saturday, May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Police Week in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to accept the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Aye.
Councilmember Schuler?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as National Police Week in the City of Norman. Whereas, Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as National Police Week. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, members of the Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary invite residents of Norman to participate in Project Blue Light by placing a blue light in front of their homes or place of business during National Police Week in remembrance of those law enforcement officers who gave their lives in the line of duty and for the officers who continue to keep our neighborhoods and communities safe. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 15th, 2021, as Peace-- that's not right-- 15th to Friday, May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through May 15th, as National Police Week in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of fallen heroes. I do also hereby proclaim and invite all citizens to attend the National Law Enforcement Memorial Service on-- I'm gonna ask for a correction. It says Friday, May 14th, but I'm pretty sure that's Thursday. Or is that Friday? All these dates seem to be-- I wanna make sure I'm giving everyone the correct information.
It's a Friday.
Yeah. Friday, May 14th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Legacy Park Amphitheater, located at T-98 Legacy Park Drive. To clarify that one more time, I'd like to invite all citizens to attend the Norman Law Enforcement Memorial Service on Friday, May 14th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Legacy Park Amphitheater, located at 1898 Legacy Park Drive. Chief Foster, I heard you there. Who will be accepting this proclamation?
Officer McWhorter, Lieutenant McWhorter.
All right, Officer or Lieutenant McWhorter, take away.
I just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation for you and the council. Police Week is a big deal for us, and obviously culminates with National Police Officers Day. On the 15th, we celebrate our local memorial, as you stated, on the 15th, on Friday. We do that at Legacy Park because of the symbolism there, and it's just such an amazing park. Again, Peace Officer Memorial Day is the 15th, and that's the day that we remember all that have fallen in the line of duty. This year, there will be 394 total added to the National Peace Officers Memorial Wall. 295 were killed in the line of duty this year. 182 of those were COVID. 113 were line-of-duty deaths, and of those, 295 from this year, four were from Oklahoma. So, again, we take this time to just remember those who, you know, put on a uniform one day and never got to go home, and then also to pay respect to their family and let them know that they are not alone in that as well. So I appreciate you, and I invite everybody to come to our memorial.
Thank you, Lieutenant. It is a beautiful memorial. I have attended it before. Hopefully, the weather will be nicer than it was today. And now is the week to always, but this week for sure. Show some love to your police officers. I'll be sure to bring by some of those mint cookies that I hope you guys still like. So, all right. Thank you, Lieutenant. Moving on. Councilmember announcements. Councilmember Stud-- Okay. Ward Two, Councilmember Schuler. What, no, like, we're excited, let's do this, nothing? Okay, that's cool.
I mean, I have a prepared statement. This is the time to do that.
Well, I mean, there's no comments later, so now is the time.
Then I'll do it now. Sorry. So I just want to extend my thanks and appreciation to the members of the selection committee for their service and taking the time to kind of move this process by pretty quickly. And the members of the committee were former Ward Two Councilmember Alicia Cardilla, who was the Chair of the Committee, former Ward Two Councilmember Richard Stewicki, Britton Perry, and then our ex-official member was Councilmember Lee Hall. As everyone knows, it has been a rocky road for Ward Two since the passing of Councilmember David Perry last year, and he has left an incredibly large shoes to fill. I want to both thank the committee and the City Council for their vote of confidence in me as I try to fill those shoes and bring back some stability to my Ward Two resident, to my fellow Ward Two residents. I'm ready to get to work on some core issues to Ward Two, such as stormwater, floodplain, and the redevelopment of Lindsay Street. To my fellow Ward Two residents, above all, I intend to work hard to earn your trust and to ensure your concerns are heard and represented on City Council. I look forward to learning what issues most concern you, so I can work on those priorities in the years to come. So, thank you. Excited to be here and excited to work with all of you.
We're excited to have you, but I will say, if you resign before July of 2022, you will be dead to me. All right, Councilmember--
Thank you. I didn't realize that this was our opportunity to say a few words. So, yeah, I just wanna say I'm really excited to be a part of this wonderful crew. Everybody has been so welcoming up to this point, and I really appreciate it, seeing all the tours and stuff and the how things work in the city was quite eye-opening. And Chris offered a family tour that I'm probably gonna take him up on because my kids wanna see the water treatment facility. But yeah, I'm really, really excited to get the job going. I have a lot of great ideas and a lot of good ideas from people in my ward. And, yeah, so thanks for voting me in. Thanks for having me, and I'm ready to go.[1562.67]
Awesome. You got, you got in early, so you'll have a longer term than than average, but we're excited to have you both join us.
Well, I don't really have much to say today, so I'm sad to see Kate go, but at the same time, welcome aboard, Councilmember Studley. You might want to take your raised hand down. And Councilmember Schuler, welcome aboard. I look forward to getting to know you both better. And I know that you're more than capable to be here and I'm excited to know you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
Okay, just a few things tonight. First of all, I wanted to say thank you one more time for the service of Councilmember Beerman and absolutely counting on you to continue to be part of our community conversation. So we'll be holding you to that. And congratulations to Councilmember Studley and Councilmember Schuler. Really looking forward to working with both of you on lots of issues that I already know that we have in common and are interested and passionate about pursuing. So looking forward to that work that we'll be doing together. I also wanted to take this opportunity that's coming a little bit further than the agenda. I always like to thank those in Ward four, as well as across the community, who are willing to step up and volunteer their time on our boards and commissions. It's such valuable work and work that we count on as council members. So I appreciate the service on the Americans with Disability Advisory Committee from Ward four, Miranda Hooper, Victor Long, and Tom Burke. And serving on the library board is Jamie Shelton, so thank you for that. And I also wanted to make just a few comments about the Ward two selection committee. Councilmember Schuler has already eloquently acknowledged the members of the committee, but I did want to take the time to thank former Councilmember Cardella, former Councilmember Stewicki, and Britton Perry, son of former Councilmember David Perry, for their service and their commitment to their ward to help us in this way. And as the City Council Oversight Committee representative, ex-official representative on the committee, I did present a list of seven recommendations to the committee that we were hoping that they would follow, as well as seeking their input as we went through three very productive meetings on, you know, how we can fine tune this process going forward. So I really appreciate their experience in the past as council members and, you know, what they brought to the table to offer for us to consider as we move forward. The number one goal was to select a consensus and, if possible, unanimous candidate to present to the city council. And they definitely accomplished this goal. And as an ex-official member, just observing the process this time, I was really impressed with the number and the quality of candidates that were interested in applying for the seat. And the five candidates that were selected to be interviewed brought a breadth and depth of experience to be considered by the Ward two selection committee. So Ward two can have a lot of confidence in the ten people that did apply to be considered for the job. And Councilmember Schuler emerged as the consensus candidate and brings a lot of experience and a lot of experience on boards and commissions with the City of Norman. So really looking forward to what she brings to the committee and just appreciate the time and effort that the Ward two selection committee put in on this selection this time.
Thank you, Councilmember. So mentioned, Councilmember Nash will not be sleeping tonight due this week. So we will turn it over to Council.
So I just wanted to again say farewell to Kate. I know you're watching us right now crying over everyone, especially me, and that's really touching. So I appreciate that. So now you can join Sir Rita in what I've now dubbed the Councilmember Retirement Community. That's Ward four.
Hey now.
It's where they go. And another one, another council member is going too, but I'll let that come to pass when it does.
Action is Councilmember Foreman.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. So, and to Councilmember Nash, and to his beautiful wife, Chandel. Congratulations on such a beautiful little baby. Ward six, we've had it rough the last couple of weeks. We got pummeled with some hail and then we got hit with some E. coli. So it's been really, really weird and all of your concerns have been heard by council and we're gonna try to figure this all out and come up with better processes. So just hang in there. And to new councilmembers Studley and Schuler, buckle up. It's a wild, wild ride. So glad to have you, welcome aboard, but get ready.
Whatever do you mean, Councilmember Foreman? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate and welcome our new colleagues, Councilmember Schuler and Councilmember Studley. Very excited to have both of you here. And please feel free to reach out anytime if I can help answer any questions or talk about history or whatever the council was thinking years ago. So more than happy to help. And absolutely agree, there's a lot of difficult issues that the City of Norman has got to address over the next coming year and years. And the city really needs a city council that can work together to come to the solutions that can help our people of this city. So I feel confident as well with this group and I look forward to the road ahead. I also want to thank Ward seven resident Megan Strong for her continued service on the library board and her reappointment tonight. And also the Ward two selection committee. I had the pleasure of serving with Councilmember Cardella and I have known Richard Stewicki for a number of years. And I've more recently got to know Britton Perry. And I felt very confident in their ability to pick the right person for this position. And I think they did. And so I appreciate the time that they were willing to spend doing that. And I also want to thank our city staff for addressing a problem in Ward seven that has really been an issue for a number of years. Several Ward seven council members have attempted to get it addressed unsuccessfully for various reasons. The traffic counts have not always matched up with the perception that the people that use this intersection have of its danger perhaps. And so the intersection of Stinson and George in Ward seven, right near the stadium, right by Madison Elementary School, all the parents at Madison will be very familiar with this. So thanks to staff, today that intersection became a four-way stop sign. So that is something I've had numerous requests about over the years. I know both of my predecessors, Linda Lockett and Doug Coverly, and maybe even before Doug, I'm not sure, were dealing with this same thing from the neighborhood. And it is the only, you have to go through this intersection to get in and out of Madison if you don't live in the neighborhood. So it has always been a big concern about the traffic on Stinson not having a stop sign and it high speed and things like that. So I think this will be a good change and I'm, hopefully this will make this area a lot safer for the kids and just the people that live in the neighborhood. So thank you to city staff for taking another look at that. And this time, the result showed that we needed to make a change and staff made that recommendation. And it's in today, so thank you. And then lastly, also just want to congratulate Councilmember Nash. His wife, Chandel, and I have been friends since sixth grade at Irving. So I've known him for a very long time. I knew them when they first started dating years ago. And so when we were in high school still. So anyway, congratulations to them. That's baby number three, two boys and a girl. So I think they got it all covered now. And so anyway, that's all I got this week. Thank you. See you next time.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, pretty short tonight. Just like everybody else said, welcome to councilmembers Schuler and Studley. I don't think it's any secret that the learning curve is pretty steep. So if there's anything I can do to help you guys get up to speed, please, yeah, don't hesitate to reach out. I really look forward to work with you both. Just foster this spirit of collaboration. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Got a few announcements this Saturday, May fifteenth. From ten A M. to one P M. at Adams Elementary in the parking lot, we are having a healthy babies pop-up event. That event is on Facebook now. Vaccines, free car seat checks. We'll also have DHS there to help anyone fill out any paperwork to make sure all of our residents have access to all of the benefits they are entitled to. Norman PD will be there with bike safety tips for the kids. And we will also have Pioneer Library Systems doing a storytime at eleven A M. So I encourage you to join us this Saturday, May fifteenth, ten A M. to one P M. at Adams Elementary. I also mentioned that Move With the Mayor is happening on May twenty-second. Fun fact, thought I was being creative. Move With the Mayor is a thing. And now Norman is officially a part of the national Move With the Mayor. We are one of twenty cities in the nation that now have this designation. And I look forward to having even more programming with these benefits. City Manager Pyle, do you have something to add?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do. First of all, welcome to our new council members. City staff is here to make your job as easy as possible. And that's still an awful lot of work on your part. We appreciate that as much as you do. But we're here for you, so please don't hesitate to reach out of things. Don't quite make sense or you need some additional information, happy to provide that. I would also like to announce to the council and the rest of the world that our search for our next Director of Fund, the Director of Parks and Recreation, has concluded. We cast a net far and wide because the citizens of Norman deserve the best available. And we interviewed candidates from Wyoming to South Carolina and all parts in between. And some people might say, well, maybe the city is in a rebuilding period. And I would say, no, we have simply reloaded and we are hitting the ground at full speed. I'd like to introduce to you our new Director of Fund, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Jason Olson. Thank you, Mr. Olson, for stepping up to the plate. You competed against Directors of Parks and Recreation in lots of different varieties and different forms and formats. And I can say you came to the interviews well-prepared and your career with the City of Norman has positioned you well. So welcome to the department head team.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager, and I look forward to working with my neighbors here in Norman to make our Parks and Recreation system more awesome. I think it's pretty great, but we have room for improvement. And we have a lot of special events and a lot of things, a lot of cool projects coming your way. And I look forward to working with the council of making everybody's life better here in Norman. So thank you, I look forward to it.
Congratulations, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
All right, I wasn't actually done yet. I thought he had a comment about the move with the mayor.
My apologies, Madam Mayor.
It's like, oh, Daryl's hand went up. Anywho, I wanted to mention that this weekend is graduation, which is fun. You know, we welcome the guests. Please wear your masks here in Norman, Oklahoma. A little bit different this year. We have four days of graduation as we are bringing back past graduates who were unable to join the traditional ceremony. Fun fact, the morning ceremonies get a flyover, so keep an eye out for that. And the evening ceremonies get fireworks. So something for all of us to enjoy here in Norman. Another reason to get vaccinated, fun is returning. I'm surprised nobody mentioned of a Friday Art Walk is back. Second Friday, this Friday, go walk around and try and stay away from people. And then also, this Sunday at Lyons Park, we have Summer Breeze. Oh, my gosh, I don't think I've ever been so excited for Summer Breeze in all my life. Hostie will be playing seven thirty P M. Food trucks, drink trucks will be there. Again, hopefully the weather will cooperate, so be sure to join us there. I also want to share my congratulations to Councilmember Nash, my appreciation to Councilmember Beerman, and a big welcome to councilmembers Studley and Schuler. Finally, I do want to acknowledge emergency communications here in Norman. Staff and I had a great talk this morning about room for improvement. And we are excited to make said improvements, both with Norman News and our Rave Emergency Tech System. But I'll tell you this right now, they don't work if you don't sign up for them. So once we get all the bugs taken out of those systems, I'm going to ask all of my colleagues here on council to help me push those systems out because apparently we're just prepared for the next emergency, basically. And making sure our communication tools are where they need to be is going to be very important for us. And I can't think about how important communication is with our residents. And again, I acknowledge we can do better and we will. So.
Madam Mayor, just a thought just now occurred to me after our conversation this morning on the subject. One of the things we do is we send out a communication on Saturday just confirming to those staff members when weather permits to do the audible weather siren test, game day siren Saturday at noon. And I think what we need, this last event helped us confirm that we will need to send out more regular tests to those citizens that have signed up to receive those communications. And it doesn't need to be every week on Saturday, but it needs to be more frequent so we can understand if people are not receiving those that they signed up for. It would be regular and reoccurring so they, if they can say, I didn't get it and we can go into the system and find out why. So thank you for bringing that up. We're here to make the system better every single time.
Awesome. Thank you, City Manager Pyle. Now onto the consent docket. Items are placed on the consent docket so they can be confirmed in one vote with unanimous approval. I'd like to accept a motion to put items twelve through thirty on the consent docket.
So moved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley.
Aye.
Councilmember Schuler.
Aye.
Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The consent docket has been placed on the.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine upon first reading. Rezoning one eleven and one thirteen East Acre Street from Residential Two to Spud, simple planned unit development. Item thirteen, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty upon first reading. Rezoning two twenty South Porter Avenue from PUD Planned Unit Development to C three. Item fourteen, mayor's appointments of Tom Burke, James Barnett, Joseph Teague, Wanda Felty, Miranda Stefan Hooper, and Victor Long to the Ad Hoc Committee to address, excuse me, the ADA Committee. Tyler McManaman and Alex Lantheir to the Board of Appeals. Laney Phillips to the Environmental Control Advisory Board. Sarah Moran, Megan Strong, and Jamie Shelton to the Library Board. Anne Gallagher and Lee Greenlee to the Public Safety Oversight Committee. And Margaret Pape, Don Menzie, and Todd Fagan to the Tree Board. Thank you all for your willingness to serve. Item fifteen, bid contract with Semeron Construction Company in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Creston Way and Schultz Drive Drainage Improvement Project with associated bonds, resolution granting tax-exempt status, and budget transfer between project accounts. Item sixteen, bid and contract with Matthews Trenching Company Incorporated in the amount of one million one hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and associated bonds for the Twelfth Avenue Northeast Manhole Replacement Project and Budget Transfer. Item seventeen, bid and contract with Smurfic Kappa for the processing and marketing of recycled products from the Norman Recycling Collection Centers. Item eighteen, easement twenty twenty-one dash eighty and off-site utility easement donated by Ash Investments LLC for the Turtle Crossing Section One Edition. Item nineteen, easement twenty twenty-one dash eighty-one and off-site utility easement donated by Ash Investments LLC for the Turtle Crossing Section One Edition. Item twenty, easement twenty twenty-one dash eighty-two and off-site utility easement donated by Ash Investments LLC for the Turtle Crossing Section One Edition. Item twenty-one, consent to encroach twenty twenty-one dash nine for seventeen oh four Barwick Drive. Item twenty-two, declaration of surplus and/or obsolete equipment and materials and authorizing the sale thereof. Item twenty-three, special claim submitted by Delisia Kelsey for herself and on behalf of her children in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for medical expenses incurred when her vehicle was struck by a city sanitation truck on Interstate forty. Item twenty-four, contract twenty-one twenty-two-one dash one fourteen with Tricor Group LLC in the thirty thousand five hundred dollar services related to the design, bidding, and construction of the Norman Compost Facility Scale House. Item twenty-five, contract twenty twenty-one dash one seventeen with Freeze and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to provide engineering services for the blending of Wells five, six, and fifty-two project at the Water Treatment Plant and budget transfer between project accounts. Item twenty-six, contract twenty twenty-one dash one nineteen, a dockless scooter revocable license agreement with Bird Rides Incorporated in the amount of three hundred dollars per year, allowing deployment of no more than one hundred and fifty dockless scooters within the public rights of way, providing for administrative fleet size increases and decreases, and providing for penalties in the event of default or violation of parking parameters. Item twenty-seven, contract twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one with BioStar E-Lite JV LLC in the amount of four million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of a solar photovoltaic system to provide energy savings action guarantee and budget transfers as outlined in the staff report. Item twenty-eight, contract twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-three with the Performing Arts Studio in the amount of five thousand dollars to provide hospitality services to the public visiting the Santa Fe Train Depot. Item twenty-nine, contract twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-six, a memorandum of understanding with Western Farmers Electric Cooperative, W F E C, concerning the reimbursement of caucshare with W F E C for certain material costs related to the relocation of existing utility lines for the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest Construction Project from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. Item thirty, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-five, appropriating fifty-four thousand and eighty-four dollars from the general fund balance and ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars from the sanitation fund balance to provide funding for an actuarial deficit of the defined benefit plan portion of the Norman Employee Retirement System. I'll entertain a motion to accept or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
I have a second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hi. She's muted.
Still on mute.
There we go.
Okay, Councilmember Studley. I know. Councilmember Schuler.
Aye.
Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We have nothing off consent tonight, which brings us to miscellaneous discussion. Your comments are limited to three minutes and to be directed to council as a whole. Do we have anyone signed up tonight, Madam Clerk? You're muted once again.
We have someone in the audience, Karen Shambaw, who would like to talk. And I believe we have one online, so we'll get Ms. Shambaw to come talk and. Might be a second or two.
I'd say, do we want to do the online one while we are getting her set up?
If I can see if Joe's on here.
He is under attendees.
Is he?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys. Welcome new council members. Look forward to meeting Councilmember Schuler from Ward Two. Joe Carter, a thirty-two-year resident of fifteen twenty-four Magnolia Street, Ward Two. Due to the unique kind of circumstances of Ward Two over the last year, I believe there's going to be a couple of amendments proposed to the budget. I just wanted to give you a little background information and a little assurance to the City Manager and Mr. Francisco of a couple of things. The pollinator project and the historic signs. I'll be emailing you the budget proposals and I'm trying to keep my comments to three minutes, Mr. Mayor. But the pollinator project evolved probably four years ago. Former Senator Sparks wanted to do some landscaping at the I thirty-five Highway Nine intersection. That evolved to Jim Wade from Bank First showed some interest in doing something there. And then good Ward Two business, Jocelyn Wall at International Pantry spearheaded a group to try and, you know, do something with pollinators. And what we have found, there's a lot of community interest. There's a lot of community members that are willing to donate to this project, but ODOT is not willing to partner with individuals or civic groups. They'd like partnering with entities because they're perpetual where individuals can lead and and change. And so I just want to assure you that if we were to make this amendment and then council would choose to approve it, which is about thirty-six thousand for that project. And then this all applies also to the signs, which is being proposed, pushed by people down at the newspaper, the Norman History Club, Andy Rieger, folks like that, to do some historic signs around town that there, once the city has begun this project, I think then we open up the opportunity to go out and do some individual fundraising. And so I just wanted you to know particularly, I didn't want to stress the City Manager or Mr. Francisco, that we were plowing things into the budget where we don't, we know, we feel like we have some options. And the signage is really important with pollinators because wildflowers are really pretty, but then they look like weeds. Strategic mowing. Council, former Senator Sparks had a meeting for thirty minutes last week with ODOT to and I believe, you know, if the council can move forward this project, we'll get a lot of community input and community fundraising opportunities. So thank you so much and welcome the council members.
Thank you, former council member. And I will also say thank you for sitting in on a recent meeting. I've taken the mayor's monarch pledge and I appreciate everything that Councilmember Carter is doing to support that effort. So he seemed like the perfect person to sit on there for me as I'm juggling fifty thousand meetings this week. Is there any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
I think Mrs. Ms. Shambaugh is ready to talk.
Okay, please introduce yourself and welcome.
I'm, I'm doing it.
Okay, she
Go ahead.
One second. She's still muted.
She needs, yeah.
Okay.
Did she do it? I don't know if Cindy knows how.
Lower left-hand column.
Oh, no.
You had it.
You had it. Rachel, the man. Alright, my apologies, ma'am. Go right ahead. We can hear you now.
Okay. I am, I reside in Ward Two and I think it was underhanded the way you appointed the Laura. I spoke with Ellen Usri, who had stepped in for Ms. Hall today. And I don't think that you considered what I had to say. Now, I left a message for you, Bree Clark, also on your telephone. Ellen Usri said that she would give me the emails of all the members. And that did not happen. What I am referring to is the committee. Mister Britton Perry resides in Moore. His address is one one eight South Merce. No, I'm sorry, forty-one eight forty-one Southwest Eighth Street in Moore. And he was on the committee for Ward Two? That seems unfair. He does not, I was told his mother lives in Ward Two. Well, he does not reside there. He is not from that ward whatsoever. And let's see, Lee Hall was a mem, was a non-voting member. However, she gave her input. Well, it says in the Norman transcript that they did. Now, Allison Patron, I believe it was you who had the Norman transcript. I might be mistaken, but one of you had said that it didn't matter what the citizens of Ward Two felt. You were going to do, this is not an election, quote unquote, is what the paper said.
Just a reminder, ma'am, please, please talk to council as a whole.
Well, I'm telling you what the paper said, what the paper said. I get the Norman transcript. And the paper said, one of you said that it was not an election. Mister, the fellow that won the election, he knew in February that he was offered that job because he would have had to interview for that job. He knew when he was elected. And he never even showed up. So I, I think it was crooked how it was done. And I think you should reconsider and ask the voters in that particular area. Now, the other person that was running got forty-seven percent of the vote. Now, in a normal thing, you would take this, if one was elected, you would take the second person. Now, forty percent of the vote is quite a number. Now, I know that another person got five percent of the vote. And I understand, but that you did not even interview those people that had, that person that had forty percent of the vote. And he was willing to sit on the council. That's all I have to say. I am not happy. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Are there any other public comments? Alright, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor Clark, I just wanted to say that I haven't been quoted in the paper recently. Just wanted to put that on the record. Address that was, but I have a feeling it was not Mister Perry.
Okay, we're not responding to miscellaneous discussion. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Someone needs voted.